So, before we begin, I would like to formally welcome Mr. Jalen Mitchell, who is our student representative to the board. He is now in his official capacity with us. He will be bringing us a very important voice to the board in his role, as he already has done so wonderfully. Before he introduces our NJROTC group, I would like to introduce two of our wonderful students that we have here in Norfolk Public Schools, Paige Pinkney and her sister, Amira. They are a 3rd and a 5th grader at Tidewater Park Elementary, and they are joined by their phenomenal principal, Dr. Sharon Phillips. And our goal is to have our young people lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when the NJROTC comes out. So that will be their important part of our school board meeting. So, thank you ladies and Dr. Phillips for joining us tonight. So without further ado, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. The colors tonight are being presented by the National Junior ROTC Color Guard from Lake Taylor High School, under the direction of Captain Charles Clark. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Amira and Paige Pinkney, students at Tidewater Park Elementary School. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now have our presentation of colors.
Arms. Hands. Reset. Ready. Cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready. Cut. Right. Face. Horts. Arms. Forward. Arch.
Dr. Boone, the superintendent's report?
Good evening. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We are at that point where we have an opportunity to share the good news that's going on in Norfolk Public Schools and the many exciting things that are happening. Before I ask for this month's video to be shared, I want to express appreciation to all of who we reference to as Team NPS Emergency Operations. We dealt with the impact and the remnants of Hurricane Michael a week or so ago, just a few days ago. And certainly it was a team effort to make sure that our schools were ready to reopen, that our technology was ready to roll, our buses navigated the streets to make sure everything was there ready, so that we could certainly reopen schools. And I want to express appreciation to all who worked from that Wednesday all the way through Sunday and then into Monday morning to make sure that our schools were ready. And I know the chair is going to acknowledge the city manager Doug Smith, but again, I appreciate his leadership and the inclusion of NPS in the city's emergency operations. And so while many were watching the storm, we were talking about it at 4:30 a.m. And I was in the dark, but we were talking. And so I want to again, express appreciation to all within the emergency operations team within NPS and all who supported making sure that our schools were ready to open on Monday morning. So with that, I'll ask if Channel 47 will share the wonderful video that they've put together in conjunction with the Communications Department for this month's superintendent's
Norfolk Public Schools and the City of Norfolk hosted members of the General Assembly as they visited two of the district's high schools and held a subcommittee meeting on school modernization. Senator William Stanley, who established the subcommittee, brought other state senators to Norfolk to show them examples of aging school infrastructure.
What we're trying to propose is a school modernization piece of legislation that is going to dedicate a lot of funding towards fixing all of our schools in the inner cities and our rural areas, those that need it the most, so that we can provide all of these children with a 21st century world-class education. And I think it starts with the foundation of the school and the infrastructure inside of it.
Traditionally, the state has put zero dollars into school infrastructure construction. The school construction dollars primarily are local dollars. So it's important for the state to look at the challenges that we face, to build new schools, to modernize some of our older schools. So it's good to have them here to take a look at it. Maybe they have some ideas on how to help cities to address the challenges in school construction and modernization.
I think it's wonderful that the General Assembly has made this a priority, of studying the issue of school facility needs and modernization of buildings. And so I think we are very fortunate to be able to host this in Norfolk and for them to get the chance to see a couple of our schools, Booker T. tonight and Maury tomorrow. Again, not as a, you know, doom and gloom, but these are our realities and these are things we're doing, and yet great teaching and learning goes on every day.
The ultimate goal for these senators is to get approval for a bond proposal that would create billions of dollars to support school infrastructure around the state. During their extensive tours of both Booker T. Washington and Maury High Schools, the senators saw firsthand the condition of the schools and asked many questions about the challenges that staff and students face every day.
It's going great. We're showing them the building. We're showing them the good, the bad, and the indifferent, showing them some of our needs, what our high needs are, just to give them more insight as to what we experience on a daily basis. But to be able to tell our students and to tell our teachers that senators, we're here to look at aging schools, primarily Booker T. Washington High School as one, is an opportunity that is going to be beneficial to us.
So we are taking a tour now from the local government, taking a tour and say, hey, let's see what needs in these schools, and let's see what we can do across the whole state. That's what we're trying to do, is say, hey, we have been there, no hearsay, we've been there since ourselves, let's send the money down to those local colleges that need this money for schools.
I think it's very important that we bring the senators, the ones who make the legislation and the policies here into our buildings, to look at the infrastructure that we have here, in order to make informed decisions on the legislative priorities that they have. And hopefully they can send some dollars our way to help rebuild our aging infrastructure.
Dozens of educators from around Hampton Roads met in Norfolk to learn about the opportunities available to students in the construction industry, thanks to a new partnership with Virginia Builds. During this first meeting, representatives from Virginia Builds discussed the importance of replenishing the construction workforce with highly qualified employees, and they even had a hands-on activity to show how problem-solving works with construction. Ultimately, this regional group of stakeholders is looking to help create career paths in construction for students, and they chose Norfolk Public Schools as their initial partner.
Well, Norfolk Public Schools has always been a good partner for the Opportunity Inc. and our Hampton Roads Workforce Development Board. And because they're centrally located, we thought it would be great for the surrounding cities to be able to bring their educators in. This is a great location that we had here, and we're reaching down to the public schools because that's where we can get a hold of these emerging workforce kids at a much earlier age and maybe tap into their aptitude and their interest into maybe looking at careers in our industry.
You know, any time that we're able to collaborate with those who are on the front lines of preparing the next generation for what's to come when they become adults is a wonderful thing. So being able to partner with our school district that are right there in the classrooms every day, preparing the next generation to choose their career opportunities, is an excellent thing.
It would be appropriate for all students, whether they are planning on going on to college or just going directly into the workforce upon graduating. And there is many, many opportunities, as I've just learned, I didn't realize that there were so many opportunities, from being a plumber to HVAC, just a number of opportunities. So again, it would be good for all students, not just those who are going into the workforce.
Students at Booker T. Washington were exposed to many types of careers as the school hosted an entrepreneur fair. Over 40 business owners lined the hallways and engaged with students about what it's like to be the boss and how they achieve that.
Putting this event together is one of the joys of what I do. I think that business owners, they understand that there's a give-back portion, there's a responsibility for them to be not only business owners, but community leaders. So this was about reaching out to people that I knew had a heart and that would want to be a part of what we're doing at Booker T.
Along with businesses, local colleges, the City of Norfolk, and other members of Black Brand were on hand to educate and inspire the students.
Well, during the academic day, you're going out through all classes, learning different things. So this is giving you opportunities to better yourself and be prepared for the future.
Today has been very educational because I personally, I want a minor in business, so I want to make sure that my business get out there with different networks. So I want to be able to like, help people produce their own website for their own businesses. So me listening to other people telling me all their business experience helps me out when I'm like, okay, this is what I want to do when I graduate from high school.
This fair is just the first part of a bigger program.
The students that are participating right now are part of the second cohort of our entrepreneur mentorship program here. So the entrepreneur fair is one piece of the program. We also offer a 10-week mentorship as well as a student pitch competition. So that's the culmination of the program, is we'll have five students that will compete for right around $2,000 in cash prizes.
All across the district, elementary students were out in force, celebrating International Walk to School Day in October. Norview Elementary staff met up with students and walked with them to school. While at Terrleton Elementary, students took part in the Third Annual Walk to School and Into a Career Day. These students were encouraged to dress like a career they're interested in and think about why it's important for them to be safe when walking to school.
Because they're walking to school every day. So we need them to think about being aware of their environment, coming with other students. We never want them walking by themselves, making sure that when they leave home, they're coming straight to school and being responsible.
Coming up in next month's superintendent's board report, we'll see how the Mr. Hollins Opus Foundation Grant of New Musical Instruments benefits our students.
It makes me feel like special, that my school and my friends are very special, that they're, think about us, our school, to pay for new violins and violas and cellos.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS TV 47 or the NPS website.
As you can see from the video, our students and staff are really engaged in the meaningful opportunities around how do we build a strong generation of learners and prepare them for the future. October also recognizes and represents the kickoff of our Impact Aid efforts. And so this year, we've taken a very different approach to not, to go beyond just sending home the cards and asking for families and everything to support it and principals to help beat the bushes for us to get those cards. But we've also engaged in a very significant marketing tool around the efforts for our Impact Aid. So today, I want to show you a video that we are putting out for the very first time that features some folks that we know here in this room. So I'd ask Channel 47 if they would share the video announcing our Impact Aid and encouraging folks to participate.
I am Jalen Mitchell, the student rep on the Norfolk Public Schools Board. And this is Schaefer Shelton. Schaefer?
Mm-hmm.
What are you doing?
Oh, I'm just looking over my Impact Aid card.
Impact Aid? Don't you mean the federal card?
Yeah, it goes by that name too.
Okay, but why is yours pink?
Well, I'm federally connected. But wait, why is yours beige?
Well, I'm not sure if I'm federally connected or not.
Okay, well, let's check. Are your parents in the military or work on federal property?
No.
Okay, do you live on federal property or live in publicly-owned housing?
I'm not sure.
Well, either way, you really need to have your parents fill that out.
But why?
Well, if they fill it out and you bring it back to school, we could earn around $3 million for everything we need in the building.
So like, books?
And computers.
And even school supplies?
And after and before school programs.
And tutoring?
Everything you could think of.
Oh my gosh, I did not know that these things are so valuable.
They're so valuable, and that's why your parents need to fill it out.
And your parents need to fill it out. So parents, be reminded to get these federal cards from your students.
So Jalen and Schaefer answered all of the critical questions about why the federal Impact Aid cards are so important. And a lot of times, people don't think it's significant, but Norfolk has a huge percentage of its land that is not on the tax rolls and taxes, real estate taxes drive educational funding. And so it's important that we close the gap with the federal impact dollars, aid dollars. And so we ask those of you present tonight, please spread the word that these cards are important and we can get them filled. And so like I said, we have a full marketing promotion that's going forward. You probably saw a flyer in the elevator when you came up tonight. And so we're looking forward to perhaps gaining more of those cards so that we can gain additional dollars. So, Dr. Gabriel, that concludes the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. That video was fantastic. And let me recognize Schaefer Shelton, who's here with us. She is our alternate school board member. You guys did a great job. I give it to the students to do it, and you will fly.
Don't say that part.
Again, on to more wonderful news. We'll now continue with the deputy clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wonder if the school board members and superintendent would like to come in front of the dais to assist in acknowledging this month's observances.
Let's see.
So we do have two proclamations this month. The first proclamation is the school board observing and acknowledging that November 12th through 16th as being American Education Week. Now, American Education Week will present all Americans with the wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. Here to receive this proclamation is Mr. Philip Hawkins Jr., who serves as the president of the Education Association of Norfolk.
Our second proclamation is also proclaiming November 12th through 16th as School Psychology Awareness Week. This year's theme is Unlock Potential, Find Your Password. A password is a personal key for unlocking any number of areas of potential in our lives. The goal is to connect how modern youth and adults unlock things to highlight how they think about skills, assets, or characteristics as passwords, which can lead to positive growth. Here to receive this proclamation is Dr. Elsie Harold Lans, who serves as the Senior Director of Student Support Services. Lastly, we have a very special recognition. This recognition goes to Lake Taylor, rather, Larchmont Elementary School, Larchmont Elementary. Please join in congratulating Larchmont Elementary for being selected to receive the 2017-2018 Virginia Index of Performance Board of Education to Student Achievement Award, which is based upon data from school years 2015 through 16 and 2016 through 17. This award is given for being accredited and for having made significant progress toward educational goals, as established by the Board of Education and the governor. Here to receive this recognition is Mr. Pfeiffer, Dennis Pfeiffer, the principal of Larchmont
Thank you very much, Mr. Butts. Certainly, we always enjoy hearing the wonderful things of Norfolk Public Schools, our schools, and our staff members. We would like to proceed now with our musical introduction, so I would like to ask Ms. Danielle Robey to come to the podium to introduce our distinguished guests for tonight. There is a hint on the side of the room as to what we will be hearing.
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Boone. I'm delighted to introduce to you tonight the rising stars associated with the Virginia Arts Festival Steel Pan Program, otherwise known as the Rhythm Project. We have four elementary school programs active in the city, and they are feeding into a new middle school program. They rehearse on Monday nights at the Arts Festival Building. They are led by Mr. Dave Longfellow and Paul Munzenreider. So off they go with some calypso music.
I did want to, young people, if you could, come back. Could you bring them back in?
You want them to come around?
I just wanted to announce who they are and their schools, so that we can recognize them. Thank you once again. Didn't that, that was awesome.
That was.
I know, my spirit is up. I want to thank you once again for your musical introduction tonight. I think it really lifted everyone's spirits and reinforced why music is so important in school. And what a wonderful feeling you brought to everybody in the room. I want to recognize the young people who played for us tonight. If you could raise your hand and make sure we greet Brianna Barnes from Blair. And she was in the program at Jaco's. Jake Burnett, when he was in the Larchmont program, he's now at Blair. We have Trinity Goodman, Ruffner Academy. Destiny Johnson, Ruffner Academy. Sharika Johnson from Ruffner Academy, awesome. Malachi Milan from Ruffner. And from Blair, we have Carly Pulling, Owen Russell, and Christian Vasquez. Awesome job. That selection was USAFE Traditional Calypso, and that was arranged by Paul Munzenreider, put that together for the kids. So it's awesome. I would, I'm going to ask, we have several principals here tonight who support the program and have the program in their schools. We have it embedded during the school day at Tidewater Park. That was the kickoff location with Dr. Sharon Phillips. We've had it at Larchmont Elementary School. They do an after-school program, and I think probably some rehearsal before school time. We have, I saw, okay. So we have two of the principals that have the program in the school with them tonight. We also have it at, of course, Jaco's, and Ingleside is a brand-new program. So if those principals would join me at the podium, I'd like to make two recognitions. We have two commendations of distinction. The first will be very specific to this group. Dr. Phillips and Mr. Pfeiffer can join me in presenting this commendation of distinction to the Virginia Arts Festival Rhythm Project. If we can bring Paul and Dave up front? Or join me here? We're all good friends? Thank you once again. I'll just read the statement. Yeah, they're great, and the kids get so excited to see them in the buildings. So this is presented to the Virginia Arts Festival Rhythm Project on this day, the 17th of October, 2018. The members of the school board of the City of Norfolk congratulate and thank you for the partnership existing between the Music Department and Virginia Arts Festival Rhythm Project. The Rhythm Project has expanded to allow for students in Norfolk Public Schools to participate in steel pan instruction at Larchmont, Tidewater Park, Jaco's, and Ingleside Elementary Schools, and most recently, a middle school program on Monday evenings throughout the school year. And that's the group you heard tonight. Thank you for your commitment and support of our students and having this unique arts experience. It is signed by Noel Gabriel, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, and myself. On behalf of this partnership, we thank you so much.
Don't sit down. We're just going to do a quick picture, real quick. And then, are you going to do the second one?
We have one more. Okay, and this is actually for the Virginia Arts Festival, their major art They're a major arts partner with us. We do things throughout the year with Virginia Arts Festival and they provide an endless amount of opportunities in theater, dance, choral band, everything throughout the year. And the big culminating project for us is, of course, the Virginia International Tattoo. And we will take part in that again this year with our High School All-City Chorus. I'd like to bring Scott Jackson up. He's actually the producer of the tattoo and I think second-in-command with Virginia Arts Festival. This is presented to Virginia Arts Festival Partnership. The members of the School Board congratulate and thank you for the partnership existing between the Music Department and Virginia Arts Festival. Through this partnership, our students have experienced a rich and unique set of offerings, workshops, master classes, and performances that have enhanced the music education of thousands of students in Norfolk Public Schools. And you've been doing it for 20-plus years and we thank you so much. So you all have information on the, because they're very thorough and they have a lovely packet for you all about the Rising Stars and we look forward to seeing you at Virginia Arts Festival events. And thank you so much.
Hold on Danielle, can we just get you guys to come together for just a second? And Dr. Phillips, Mr. Pfeiffer, come on right there.
Too close to the mic.
Yeah, there we go, that's good. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much for the time.
That was an incredible musical performance. Thank you very much, Ms. Robey, for leading the charge of the, of our music education here in Norfolk Public Schools. So our next introduction would be for our City Manager who we've invited to come here tonight to give us a presentation on some very important information with regards to their development with educational planning in St. Paul's Quadrant. And Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for joining us tonight, taking time out of your schedule. As you can see, we have lots of entertainment for our School Board meetings and if at any point in time you would like to bring some of these events to the City Council meetings, I'm sure that if you connect with Dr. Boone, we can make that happen.
Well, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, look at you guys, you're so high tech.
We are.
Dr. Boone, listen, it's a pleasure to be with you. And I was gonna say, Dr. Boone, you set a high bar. I gotta tell you, between the videos and the, and the music, and you did not tell me I was gonna follow the Rising Stars. That's not fair. But I'll, I'll do the best I can and certainly a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'll make a couple of opening comments unrelated to St. Paul's, which is, I'll go back to hurricanes, right? So Hurricane Florence was heading our way and I gotta tell you, for, for all the right reasons, we were extremely nervous and, you know, I looked down at the folks in North Carolina and South Carolina and there for the grace of God goes Norfolk, right? And I want to thank you all and the school system for the partnership that we had. You know, when the Governor declared that state of emergency, there's a lot of things that have to happen. And it included, we opened five shelters and three of those shelters were schools. Crossroads and Camp Estella and Norview High School. And your team and your staff were fantastic. And we ended up sheltering several hundred people. And as we waited for that storm, which fortunately didn't come through, but I want to thank you on behalf of the city and the residents of Norfolk for, for that partnership. And Dr. Boone, thank you particularly. So I'm gonna talk to you tonight about the transformation of St. Paul's and I'll take about 10 minutes to do that. And I am going to make some general comments. I'm gonna talk to you, give you a little bit of background. A lot of this, I hope you know, I hope you've been hearing. Talk to you some about the planning principles that we're going through and start to give you a sense of how this is obviously gonna impact the school system. Talk to you about People First, which is a program that we're undertaking to really address the families in the, in the communities. Talk to you about really a change that came about over the last several months with the opportunity to apply for a Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant with HUD which really changed our process a little bit, I think all for the, all for the good, but let you understand what that looks like and talk to you about next steps. But the St. Paul's redevelopment includes the transformation of both human capital and place. The city and the Housing Authority are working in partnership with the residents to implement these parallel transformations. And while the area has been the subject of many planning efforts in the past, most recent efforts were championed by a new mayor and a new city council looking to be bold and to tackle big issues like sea level rise and poverty. And I would say to you that given that history of planning, I made one of, the first major mistakes since I took, took this role back in the spring of 17. And we came forward with a resolution with the Housing Authority that really made some, made some assumptions of awareness of the community and brought forward a resolution that talked a lot about place, talked a lot about real estate, talked a lot about special purpose entities, didn't talk very much about people, right? And, and we got a lot of pushback and I think rightly so. And so the council said, "Stop and get out in the community and make sure folks understand what we're thinking, make sure we understand what the residents are thinking, and then come back to us." And so the mayor held more than a dozen community meetings that helped inform our strategy moving forward and that input was used as the basis of our CNI application. I'll tell you a little bit about that and the development of the People First program, which I think is something that's really unique in these projects. The application also included extensive community outreach and I'll talk to you about that. We see St. Paul's as our opportunity to implement our resilience strategy writ large. Norfolk now has a unique opportunity to act in order to address its resilience goals and to break the cycle of poverty and lift residents to economic mobility. I really do believe this is a legacy opportunity for this city. And when I say that, and I say it whenever I talk to a group, it's, it's a legacy for our administration, it's a legacy for the City Council, I would argue that it's a legacy for the School Board, I think it's a legacy for the business community, for the philanthropic community, for the faith community. It is going to take everybody pulling together to make this, this transformation a success. I'll give you a little bit of background, I hope you know most of this and I think you do. While this area of our city, and you're really thinking about City Hall Avenue, St. Paul's, Tywater Drive, Virginia Beach Boulevard, those three housing communities that are, that are within there, all of our most important assets are right next door. Downtown, the Arts District, Norfolk State, Harbor Park. And yet, the area is isolated. It's cut off from those opportunities provided by these important assets. Almost 1,700 units of housing that are obsolete, they're over 60 years old. There's, it's home to 4,200 people, right? And here's what's really relevant for you all, 2,200 of those people are children. The average, average annual income is $12,000 a year. The poverty rate is three times that of the city. The crime rate is more than 33 times that of the city. And earns only $300,000 in taxes. We've got 230 acres on the adjacent to downtown that generates $300,000 in annual taxes. We, as you know, there's two schools in the area, PB Young and Tywater Park. And those schools and that community have significant challenges from coastal and stormwater flooding. So we held a series of community meetings and we asked the residents, "What do you want? What do you want out of your neighborhood? What do you want out of this community?" What came from that were half a dozen planning principles. And they're just, they're around exactly what you'd expect them to be. Flooding, they said, "Protect our community from flooding by creating infrastructure and green space that also provides educational and recreational opportunities." And we'll talk about that a little bit. "We want a high-quality educational system. We want to develop an innovative cradle-to-career education that will prepare our children for productive careers that fosters lifelong learning." And I'm, I'm here to tell you tonight, the success of this transformation will be driven in large part by the education system and the education that we're able to offer to these, to these families. The amenities, residents want exactly what we all want. Provide the amenities needed for daily life, shops, pharmacies, quality food, access to health and wellness and medical facilities. Talked a lot about mixed income. And they wanted to be in a mixed-income neighborhood, build mixed-income housing to expand social capital and increase homeownership. Jobs, you know, we talk a lot about workforce development and labor. And you know, the old adage, "Used to be location, location, location." And now it's labor, labor, labor. Do you have the workforce? And I would argue that workforce companies need talent and talent needs access, right? And so a big part of what we're trying to accomplish in this, in this transformation is to make sure that all residents of Norfolk have access to opportunity and have the skill sets that they need to take advantage of that opportunity. And the last, which I think is really interesting, is connection. To connect this community to the city physically, economically, and socially. And the reality is, it's been an island for decades. And it's been an area that for the most, for most of us thrive around. And we're spending a lot of time talking about how to provide a transportation network and a network of streets like Freemason that'll go all the way through to Tywater Drive and really make this community an integral part of the city. So we talked about People First a little bit, but let me tell you what that means. People First directly responds to residents' requests from those community meetings and the needs assessment being conducted in the community. A work group that includes residents has designed the components of initiative that includes comprehensive case management that will work with the entire family, mobility services, meaning assistance before, during, and after their move, and transformative, transformative human services around health, education, and employment services. What I think will be different about what we're going to do in this initiative that's different from what other communities have done and that's different than what Norfolk has done historically is we're going to stay with these families for years. And I think we've done a good job, we local government, have done a good job with the communities that we transformed. But we didn't stick with the people that left those communities. And so what People First is a, is a really significant commitment of general fund money, $3 million, 1.9 cents on the real estate tax, to stay with these 1,700 families and make sure that they get the support services and the house service, housing services and the workforce development services that they need to be successful. So how do you do that? And one, I think if we knew how to do it, we'd have done it, right? And so I think we went out with a request for information. There's very few organizations or communities that have done this really well on this kind of scale. So we, so we sent out a request for information asking, "What's out there? Who's done these kinds of projects? What have you learned?" And that shaped an RFP that went out for an organization that would come in and help us oversee People First. We've gotten six responses from that RFP and we're reviewing those responses now and I think we'll make some recommendations shortly. In terms of the Choice Neighborhood Application, the city and the Housing Authority, really what happened was in the fall of 17, we had an opportunity to make an application for a Choice Neighborhood Grant. The reality was, we were out in the community telling folks, "We didn't have a plan," right? And so then to step forward and put an application in that was going to be a very detailed plan of what you were going to do was disingenuous. And so we thought that was going to be the last round of Choice Neighborhood Initiative applications. And then we started hearing conversation in the spring that HUD may put out another round and sure enough, in about May, we got notice of application and the opportunity to, to move forward. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. What CNI does is it focuses on housing people in neighborhoods, which obviously aligns well with our vision for the entire St. Paul's area. It's important to note that the city and the Housing Authority in 2011 won a CNI planning grant for Tywater Gardens. So obviously, we're building on the work that was done then. The funds, and we've applied for $30 million, would be used for Phase One, which again is Tywater Gardens, the community most impacted by flooding. The boundaries do cover all three communities and Huntersville, so it's important that we make sure that we solidify and strengthen the neighborhoods in the area. But it does, and it does call for the demolition of Tywater Gardens. So the redevelopment of Tywater Gardens is 618 obsolete public housing units located within the 100-year flood plain. And it's the major, it's the first major initiative within the overall St. Paul's Transformation Plan. Again, we held extensive community meetings during the CNI process that included a design charrette which took place over the summer at St. Mary's. Residents and various stakeholders participated in those work sessions. One of the worst sections was with Norfolk Public School System. So Dr. Karen Bailey and your facilities consultant, Tracy Richter, were extremely helpful in helping us think through the role of education in St. Paul's. And so the, the school's consideration of school consolidation will be very important to this process as we think about what a new school or schools looks like in St. Paul's and where it would be placed. So I'll talk about, and I'll come back to that in a minute, I'll talk about housing. Part of the process for HUD with a CNI application is you have to have a housing lead, a developer, frankly, that has worked with HUD to, to partner on the housing component. We issued an RFP, we had eight responses, four from national firms. And the committee selected Bryn Shore out of Chicago. They've teamed up with the Bank of America CDC, they'll actually be in town tomorrow, meeting with different folks. Again, 618 units of Tywater Gardens will be demolished over time. Those would be, half of those would be replaced, or 309 with hard replacement units. 200 of those will be on the CNI site and then 109 of those would be off-site. And an additional 309 units will be converted to housing choice vouchers for families wishing to move off-site. So a main goal here is to not re-concentrate poverty, right? And so part of what, and one of the biggest challenges we'll have and, and is finding, I'm confident that the, the people that come back into this community will have a wonderful situation. Our obligation is to make sure that anybody that leaves the community also has a wonderful opportunity. Has the same quality of housing, has the same access to quality education, has the same access to those things that we talked about. And so we're looking at an inventory of possible locations, of, of market housing or private housing, and looking at making sure that the, the demographics in those communities are equally positive for these folks. So that's the housing piece. In terms of phasing, all the communities, so part of the benefit of CNI is you've got a, you've got a timeline that you've got to adhere to. All communities will be mixed income with construction beginning in 2020 and completed by 2024. The first phase is along Fenn Church and that's where we'll, we'll begin to provide opportunity for early bids near the transit site. That is cleared property that we own now and gives us an opportunity to get housing up quickly. We'll also begin on the Tywater Drive site in terms of clearing the bottom portion of the site so that we can build the Greenway/Blue Way that will provide the stormwater solutions needed to control flooding and create an amenity for the neighborhood that changes the neighborhood and draws people in. We really think that the opportunity to, the reality is water's coming back in that creek, right? And so the opportunity to not deny that, but embrace that and create a park and water system that comes up Tywater Drive and up Charlotte and into the community really creates an asset that could be used for, for all the residents. At a United for Children meeting last week, staff began having conversations with Dr. Birdsong about putting in place an information sharing agreement that would allow NRHA to begin sharing the number of children in Phase One so that our collective staffs could begin working together to ensure a seamless transition for our youth. So communication is going to be really important. I'll talk about people for a minute. The people section of the CNI application focuses on the implementation of people first. However, NRHA is providing services to residents now, especially those in Phase One. All residents in Phase One were assigned personal points of contact and are beginning to address possible issues now like poor credit, unpaid utility bills, poor rent payment history that might affect their transition. This section of the application also outlines the, the education plan for the community. And so Norfolk Public Schools is serving as the education lead for our application. Dr. Boone and her staff assisted in writing the education strategies and providing the data needed for the application. A work group is being structured now and we'll certainly need MPS at the table to flesh out these strategies and next steps. In terms of the neighborhoods, residential development is not enough to successfully revitalize these neighborhoods. Choice Implementation Grant Funds allow flexible funding to support non-residential development called Critical Community Improvements, or CCI. And there's four that we put in our application. They're viewed as the glue that holds the people and the housing together. There'll be a community hub, a community space that will provide business incubation and innovation support, potential food hall, job training opportunities, health education, and outreach. The second is a streetscape that doubles as a historic trail that honors the accomplishment, the accomplishments of African-American luminaries from Norfolk. The third is a homeownership and facade improvement program in Huntersville that strengthens the neighborhood and supports the goals of community there. And the final is additional support for SWAM businesses and the expansion of Norfolk Works into the community. So where do we go from here? The next steps are, we'll prepare for a site visit from HUD in December or January kind of timeframe. We think we have a competitive application. It's a very transparent process. You can, you can look at your application and know how many points you're going to get. So we're fairly confident we're gonna get to the next round. But HUD would expect a visit, a site visit to see and understand the partnerships in the community and to hear from MPS on the educational strategy. The Housing Authority is also working on a demolition act, application that will be submitted this fall and we anticipate a decision on both in early 19. We're meeting with Bryn Shore Development Team tomorrow to prepare for a low-income housing tax credit application in March that will allow us to begin the early build sites that I talked about that would provide relocation options for residents. And the first phase of relocation is anticipated in the summer of 19. So we'll try and line up so that families are moved and settled before the school year and we're certainly gonna need your help thinking through that. The demolition and relocation of Tywater will be phased over three to five years. And so here's the important thing I need you to hear tonight, among others, is regardless of the outcome of this CNI application, the city and the Housing Authority are committed to moving forward with this project. We've committed real resources to the project, including the three... We've committed real resources to the project, including the $3 million I mentioned for People First, but also $14 million in capital for the CIP budget. And we certainly, my main request here, and I know it's one you'll accept, is we hope MPS will continue to be a strong partner in this effort as we transform a community for the betterment of the entire city. So thank you. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to first, Dr. Boone, to provide some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for sharing that. To the city's credit, Norfolk Public Schools has been at the table. It was one of the first meetings I had when I arrived in December of 2015, different city manager and other players, but the same conversation. And so we have been at the table around the work. I sit on the task force. Dr. Legrand also serves as in my backup, as a backup instead. But we're at the table, in the conversations, and you'll recall, as we've done our educational planning work, we've talked about the shifting target of this work, not as a negative, but really what we're trying to accomplish. And with firmer timelines, and as Mr. Smith has shared tonight, that we're in a place now of knowing how best to support families. Our principals have been invited to the table in the community conversations, and they too have lent voice around this as a means of not only talking about education, but as a means of supporting the children and families that will be impacted by this transformation. So we, you know, we are very committed to a thriving educational opportunity within this quadrant as we are working throughout the entire district. And so we appreciate being at the table on the front end and not later catching up.
Questions from board members?
I have a...
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah. So, welcome.
Thank you.
You know, we get a, for those of you that don't know, Mandarin Smith and I get a chance to exchange email and have conversations quite a bit with my private citizen hat on. And so nothing I'm about to say to him now will be a surprise to him. This is probably my, the first time that I've probably spoken to you as a school board member elected from Ward Seven. And as I've shared with you and shared during my time on the Housing Authority Board, working in Broad Creek, one of the things that concerns me, you know, and Norfolk Public Schools talk about being the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, I think our city still struggles with having frank and honest conversations about racial segregation and concentrated poverty. So we're an elected school board, we're elected by wards. Our wards are racially gerrymandered, based upon historic housing patterns that didn't happen by chance, happened by government action. And I think it's going to take deliberate, intentional action by the government and the private sector to truly have the types of learning environments that we've described. Ms. Smith down there represents Ward Four, except for a few public housing units that are in the Broad Creek redevelopment. Every public housing unit in the city of Norfolk resides in Ward Four. I represent Ward Seven. I have every public housing unit in Ward Seven. I have 70, 80% of every low-income housing tax credit unit. And even as we describe the project area from Tidewater Gardens to the railroad track in Huntersville, that whole area, as the application indicates, is already racially isolated and concentrated in poverty. And it's been that way long before my mother grew up on B Avenue and my father grew up on Goochlin Street. So we're talking, so my father, before I came to this meeting, he's what, 84 years old? So we're talking about, you know, 80-plus years of a legacy of segregation and concentrated poverty. David Rusk put out a study maybe about 15 years ago called "The Segregation Tax." So if you're a homeowner in Ward Seven, and you're in one of our racially isolated neighborhoods, it shows that your, the value, the assessment value, the wealth value of your home is negatively impacted by you being in a segregated neighborhood. And by segregated, I mean predominantly African-American. And so I'm, you know, deeply concerned about what we're describing as mixed income, the project area. I think we have to be much more intentional about trying to make sure that we are providing housing opportunities outside of Ward Seven. And frankly, as you know, I believe this is a regional issue, and I hope Norfolk will lead as a region. But we, in my opinion, we're not really going to, I mean, we're going to do some great things, and you know I'm all on board for the great things that I think we can do for our legacy. But I think we have to be willing to dissect ourselves from the legacy of the past, where promises were made in past redevelopments around these opportunities, including on the education side. And as soon as a recession hit, or as soon as something new came up, whatever the new shiny thing was, you know, it didn't occur. We still deal with here, some of the challenged schools that we have today are a direct result of public housing and residential segregation patterns that were created back in the 1950s. So I'm going to continue to encourage that we not shy away from this conversation. I hope this board will not shy away from that conversation, because it just would be totally unfair, in my opinion, un-American in the ideals that we say that we espouse, to have another 50 to 80 years of legacy where we just shift African-American families, in particular, the 2,000 children that you mentioned. I think this area is the only census tract in the Commonwealth of Virginia that has a concentration of children like that, and 99% of them are African-American. So to just shift them from one challenged school to another, from one challenged neighborhood to another, to me, is not going to be good enough. And I don't care how many African-Americans come and, you know, stick their hand out for a contract to say that they're going to make it okay, you know, I'm going to be opposed to that. And, but I just think we have an opportunity to truly do some responsible redevelopment and truly have a cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. But it's going to take some intentionality beyond, as you know, I've read every page of the application, and I think we need to do better. I think there's some opportunities next to the mall, there's some opportunities, there was an article in newspaper about Fort Norfolk. There are other opportunities that I think if we're truly committed to not have concentrated poverty and to truly provide housing opportunities for all, we can do it if we truly have the will to do so. So, but thank you.
Good points. You're right, nothing we haven't discussed. I'd say a couple of things. What we're really trying hard to do is give a forum for folks to both hear and criticize and add to what we're doing. So I should have said that Councilman Riddick and Councilwoman Graves are chairing the St. Paul's Advisory Group. Dr. Boone represents you all on that group. Their meeting last night talked about a lot of this conversation of the folks that choose to leave the neighborhood. Where do they go? How do they get the same opportunities? And we literally started showing the spreadsheets of where these places are that meet certain criteria, where they are within the region, where they are within Norfolk. And so the challenge I give the community, not only to the board, but it is, this is a citywide conversation. This is a citywide challenge, and you cannot sit back. And if you don't like, we're going to make mistakes, right? My commitment to you is, when we do, we'll own them. And my request would be, don't kill us when we do, right? And it's what we all, it's easy to, hey, man, you know, why'd you do this? Well, you know what? Because I didn't know any better. Because I had some implicit bias, whatever it was. But we will own those, but we've got to work at it in a collaborative way, and I'm confident we will.
Ms. Smith?
I have a concern. As this process begins to take place, I'd like us to keep an eye on, as a board, how it affects us in terms of our budget, the amount of monies we receive per student, also how it's going to affect our classroom sizes, what's going to happen to our teachers, our administration, the faculty and staff of these schools? Because there's going to be a shift, we're talking about 2,000 students, there's going to be a shift of them somewhere within Norfolk and somewhere outside of Norfolk. What impact is that going to have on our fiscal resources? Classroom size and school staffing? I think that's very important to us as a board in how we, how we plan our future for our classes, our schools.
And I think that Dr. Boone has had that as a top priority in these conversations.
Thank you. That is, that point of uncertainty for us is not knowing where families will reside. And so it's difficult for us to do the planning as it relates to elementary schools in particular, because most of those are pretty much at capacity. We don't have a lot of available capacity at our elementary schools. So it's going to be critically important for these, the first 100 units, I guess it is, in Phase One, as Mr. Smith mentioned, Dr. Birdsong with the United for Children, in the ways in which we're already monitoring students who have addresses within those first 100 units, so that we can get a feel for where they are going and where they are. And please understand, that's no commentary on the students, that's just simply about space and making sure that we have everything that's available. And so we'll be watching this process closely, but that's a piece that both the city and all the schools directly control. And so where people end up, will push us sometimes, and I couldn't agree more, we're going to have to have some budgetary flexibility as we think about how we make sure we address the needs of students. We currently, as we've just finished our September 30th enrollment and process, we know sometimes we have to make shifts within those. With the commitment for folks to be settled with, who have children particularly, before the beginning of school, we should be able to know where we need to place staffing. But again, being part of the conversations and knowing where folks are moving will only help us begin to address this, but we, it's a moving target, it's an unknown target.
First, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, as well as our city leaders, and also for the acknowledgement of knowing, you know, when to slow down and how our biases do impact the work. And that's true, we talked about that last week of this board as well, as we looked at our data, knowing that our schools with concentrated poverty face different challenges. And until we address it, we're going to continue to face those challenges. And as you said, you know, the success of the redevelopment depends on the success of the school system and vice versa. So next steps, I'm glad, it sounds like a communication plan is in place between the school system and the city's work, but as far as the community and next steps, I think you mentioned tomorrow that there's a meeting with CNI. Did I, did I hear that?
So with the development team.
With the development team, okay. And is the school system involved with?
Not in those conversations. It's really where to put housing in this first phase. But so a couple of things are going on that may be addressed. So right now, the Housing Authority is going through their annual plan process. So historically, they've had their big meeting where they invite everybody, and I think they end up going over to Ruffner. And part of what folks have said is, we want more individualized conversations. So I'll get my locations wrong, but I think last night they were in Tidewater Gardens, then they're in Calvert, I think tomorrow night, or maybe tonight, and then tomorrow night in Young Terrace. So we're really working hard to make sure that people understand kind of how they're going to be impacted, right? And yet, we've had all these community meetings, I'm telling you, we've had a ton of them. But when you look and you look at the numbers, I'm going to tell you, we've had 400 or 500 people really actively participating, right? And that feels pretty good, right? But we're talking about 4,500 people. And so I think a place, listening to you all, I think a place you can help us is in that sharing of information. And so Deidre Love stood up at the, with Teens with a Purpose stood up last night and said, you know, I'm nervous because my teens are nervous, and I'm worried, what does this mean for them? They don't understand. And so we're trying to figure, how do we convey the right message to them and try to allay those concerns? And I think, I think that's a place y'all could probably, listening to you, I think that's a place y'all could probably help us. So if you've got groups, families, organizations that you feel like don't know the story, call on us. We've gotten pretty good at getting out and telling the story and answering questions. And one of the things I say pretty readily is, there are going to be more questions than we have answers. That's okay. But we've got, every resident has gotten personal invitations from the mayor to these meetings, every resident gets a quarterly newsletter telling them what's going on, to the point where we actually had to slow down a little bit because folks started coming to these meetings and saying, hey, man, you're not telling me anything new. You know, I don't want to come back until you can tell me where I'm going. And I get it. But what I said is, we're going to over-communicate. That's our goal, is to over-communicate. And I'd rather that than folks have questions, but you all can certainly help us there.
Ms. Martin?
I just want to talk about the initiative of socioeconomic diversity. That is something that we're challenging.
So a lot of times, what I was saying was, the socioeconomic diversity initiative, the schools cannot accomplish that without the help of our neighborhoods and housing redevelopment. And of course, in this plan, it's very important. And when you talk about including all the citizens, I will say that my side of town, they don't feel included in this conversation. And some of them might be ones that you'd like to, you know, maybe we'll move down into this wonderful new area at some point. But I will say that they're very skeptical when I'm talking to them and we're at our civic league meetings and when I was campaigning door-to-door, they're very skeptical that you can achieve that. And I know that it's a high order, but it's a very important one. And I'm just, I want to stress, do not lose sight of that. Socioeconomic diversity is the path to the American dream through our public schools. And children need this, and our neighborhoods need this, and our city needs this. So please do not lose sight of that. And I'm really excited to hear what a great relationship we have with Dr. Boone and her involvement with your committee. But again, I'm going to hold you to it.
Yeah. So what you'll see is, we talked a lot with council at their February retreat about inclusive economic growth, right? And so all the things you all see, you know, we've seen great growth in the country, right? But there's been an enormous amount of disparity, right? And you've got the average worker today makes about the same thing they did in 1980. And so you've had a lot of folks do really well, and a lot of folks get left behind. And so our challenge, and you've seen, there are not many communities, there's a lot of communities talking about inclusive economic growth, there's not many that have figured it out. And so we're really talking a lot about what that means in Norfolk, what that looks like. And it's, yes, it's getting Norfolk residents jobs in the projects that we're supporting, it's getting Norfolk businesses opportunities, it's getting Norfolk investors opportunities, but it's all Norfolk residents. And it's hard, you know? If it were easy, folks would have figured it out. So I think the closest thing I've gotten to a compliment in all this was a debate with a friend of yours, Mr. Jordan, and at the end, he said, well, what I'll give you is, I think the intent's there this time.
I'm going to give you a compliment before you leave me.
That's progress.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to offer my compliment then. In all seriousness, I appreciate the candor that you've brought to this effort as a city manager, and frankly, even allowing the council or encouraging the council to have a discussion around inclusive growth and opportunities. So I know you're sincere with that. I just also know it takes courage beyond the city manager. And I think the same way that the community rallied to provide support when we were trying to bring additional funds to the school and the city, I think it's going to take that same level of commitment. But I appreciate your candor and your willingness to talk frank about the issues that you face.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate the joint partnership, and we will be with you every step of the way. I think this is certainly point zero of building this wonderful opportunity that we have joint with the educational system and with the city and for the socioeconomic diversity that we all want to have. And where the data shows, we'll have the best outcomes. So thanks again for coming to present, and we will be in touch.
My pleasure. I'll come back anytime.
Moving right along, we will go on with our citizen comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Let's see here. When your name is called, please follow the steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium can be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether or not you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes, and I'm going to stress, we're going to keep you to three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Mr. Butts?
So Madam Chair, we have a total of six speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Ms. Rosalynn Slezia, to be followed by... Our first speaker is Ms. Rosalyn Slezia, to be followed by Mr. James Jarman Jr.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to all the members of the Norfolk School Board. My name is Rosalyn Slezia, and I am a volunteer of the International We Love You Foundation. Our founder and chairwoman, Zhang Gilzha, established the International We Love You Foundation as a vehicle to deliver love and happiness to all neighbors in need. Our initiatives include blood drives, environmental protection, and education through the clean world movement, disaster relief, social welfare, and international aid. We Love You has more than 150,000 volunteers in over 50 countries, who all share the same vision, that if everyone has the heart of a mother, the world we live in would be full of love, consideration, and selfless acts of kindness. Tonight, we are here to speak about our upcoming event that will be held in November. After meeting with Deputy Clerk Sherman Butts, we are looking forward to working with the Norfolk School Board to host our anti-bullying event. Many statistics reflect the harsh reality that our children face in daily lives concerning bullying. According to the Anti-Bullying Institute, one in seven students grades K through 12 are either a bully or have been a victim of bullying. At least once a day, six out of 10 teenagers say that they witnessed bullying in school. These statistics are opportunities to improve the lives of our children, neighbors, friends, and family. We Love You would like to offer the heart of a mother who plays the role as a family mediator, giving unconditional love. Our goal is to prevent bullying through raising awareness, utilizing public schools or community facilities, and involving the student body, faculty, and parents. We have prepared hands-on activities for students to understand and implement anti-bullying methods, not only in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. To further this effort, we are asking for the board's support to host a group lecture or assembly with keynote speakers to present various tools and resources related to this prevention campaign. We Love You believes that only together can we have, can we move forward to reduce and prevent this issue in our community. We look forward to discussing ways we can work together to empower our youth. This will conclude our introduction here tonight.
Thank you.
I do have a presentation booklet here, if any of you would like to take a look at it.
My name is James Jarman Jr. This is my CO, Willie James Jarman III. He is the reason that I get up and go to work in the morning in the light of my life. I came tonight for a few simple reasons. First, I'd like to say thank you and hello to the new school board members. Life has not presented me an opportunity to say welcome and thank you until now. Those of you who know me, my son and I lost our home to fire, and it set me back a bit. And don't take absence as my forgetfulness. The other thing that I would like to say to the school board directly, I'm on the front line when I think you made a mistake or lapse in judgment. Therefore, my maker tells me I need to be on the front line and thank you when I think you made a stride or positive step. Without a lot of great detail, I wish to say to you and everybody that helped and had a hand in it and recognize my outcry, thank you for assisting me with my son being presented a socio-economic diverse environment. And I will leave that at that. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. The other thing, God told me to help the kids and not forget them. He did not say, "Help them and don't forget them" when it's convenient or easy. He has made sure that it's not easy. So my prayers to the school board this year, and the teachers, and the people that's associated. I'm one person. This year, I will proceed to show you what difference one person can make, one concerned citizen, one concerned parent. Again, I thank you for your hard work, and I would leave you with this fleeting thought. You go on a car lot to purchase a car. Some people want fast cars, some people want economy cars that get 50 miles to the gallon. There's no such thing as a 50 mile to the gallon car and a car that makes 800 horsepower. The two don't mix. That analogy, with that said, there's no such thing as neighborhood schools and socioeconomic diversity, as Mr. Jordan has clearly outlined very eloquently tonight. Thank you for your time.
Our next two speakers are Mr. Philip Hawkins Jr., followed by Ms. Heather Parker.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Chair of the Norfolk School Board, Vice Chair Clanton, Honorable Members of the Norfolk School Board, Norfolk's Administrative Team, and guests. My name is Philip Hawkins, and I'm the President of the Education Association of Norfolk, the EAN. And of course, the EAN is the local affiliate of the Virginia Education Association, the VEA, and the National Education Association, the NEA, which is the largest labor union in the United States. On behalf of our labor union and the children we serve, I would like to humbly accept this proclamation that you gave us tonight, and thank you, and the members of the Norfolk School Board, for recognizing the 97th Annual Recognition of the American Education Week for Public Schools Across America, which is coming, of course, November 12th through the 16th. And I would like to also acknowledge that the EAN will fully support a public proclamation for our education support professionals right here in Norfolk, but also across this country. For Wednesday, November 14th during that week, is National Education Support Professionals Day. The City of Norfolk will be joining us, as in many years past, nationwide to celebrate this week. And we also will continue our Wear Red for Public Ed campaign on Wednesday, so we're asking you to continue to support us in that effort as we work with you all to help ask for higher funding for public schools at every level of government, and put post-social media messages about the work of Norfolk Public Schools and all of our educators and our children within our boundaries. American Education Week will present all Americans with the wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. 2018's theme this year will be Reach, Educate, and Inspire, and it will be reflected in those special observances during that week. Monday will be the kickoff day. Tuesday will be Parents' Day. Wednesday will be Educational Support Professionals Day. Thursday will be Educator for Day. And Friday will be Substitute Educators' Day. And these proclamations will continue to be a reminder and a renewal of the school board's belief and commitment that I know you have and share with us, and the need to support the resources for our education support professionals, because we will be asking this year that we give them a equitable raise so that they can come up to a living wage this year. But we want to make sure that every student will get that education that they need from all of our staff, to help promote that brighter future, and to recognize that our ESPs, they do provide the support on the front line for our education system. We cannot forget the work that they do and the role that they play for our public schools every day. Thank you so much.
I'm Heather Parker, I'm a teacher with Norfolk Public Schools. I'm here today to talk on behalf of military spouse rights. Three years ago, I was employed with MPS. I taught fourth grade at Camp Allen Elementary. It was this school that I started my teaching career, was lucky enough to build strong relationships, like the district has asked us to do. In the summer of 2015, my husband received military orders out of state. As a family, we made the decision for my husband to go ahead without us, so that I could continue my, sorry, I could honor my commitment with Norfolk Public Schools, because I had already signed a contract to teach the next year. And also, I wanted more time with my mentors, and I wasn't ready to leave yet. When the time finally came for me to rejoin my husband a year later, I was devastated. I didn't want to leave my Camp Allen community, but I left knowing that as soon as I returned with military orders, I would be welcomed back to my community with open arms. It was this that I held on to for two years while I waited to come back. When it was time to choose orders, we had the option to go to some pretty amazing places, but I begged my husband to bring me back to Virginia, not to Chesapeake or Virginia Beach or Norfolk, but specifically to Camp Allen, because that's where my community was. It is extremely important for military spouses to try and get to somewhere that's familiar. It's worth more than words can express, because we are constantly starting over. So when we got our Virginia orders, Ms. Copeland, the principal with Camp Allen, was the first person I reached out to to tell that we were coming back. We talked from January, when we got orders, all the way through till I arrived in July, about me coming back, when to sign the contract, about procedures and programs and things I was going to have in my classroom, and just to celebrate that I was coming back to my community. Unfortunately, I was met with roadblock after roadblock because I'm a military spouse. I was not allowed to sign my contract when contracts were released, because I was out of state still with my husband, who was on military orders. It was because of that, that as soon as the military allowed us to leave, we left, drove four straight days to get here, and I was at the district office the very next morning, less than 10 hours after arriving, to sign my contract as soon as I can. If I would have been allowed to sign my contract when contracts were released, I would still be at Camp Allen today. But unfortunately, when student numbers came in, I was the first one to go, because our numbers didn't make it, and I was considered the last hire. My time before was not counted. I left because of military orders. I didn't want to leave. I went, if I could have gone kicking and screaming, I would have, but I didn't. I did go to be with my husband and my family. And when I came back, I was penalized for it. I'm asking Norfolk to take a step in the right direction and change your policy to protect military spouse rights. Make sure that our time before is acknowledged, and that our sacrifice matters, because we serve alongside our service members. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Thomas Calhoun, followed by Ms. Vicky Greco.
Madam Chair, good evening. My name is Thomas Calhoun. I am president of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I am here tonight to discuss the calls and concerns I'm getting about school visits from some of your board members, getting them from staff, a couple from administrators. Most of them are about Ms. Campson. Two words used most often are angry and pushy. I've been asked if Ms. Campson is angry with Norfolk Public Schools about not getting Chief Academic Affairs job, I don't know. I hope she's not still angry. Next is Vice President, I've been told by a couple of people, the Vice Chair walks through the school like he's talking to his employees, they work for him. Ms. Martin had an interesting conversation with one of my executive board members, very interesting. My question, Madam Chair, is, if your visits are a school board project, why aren't all several members visiting schools? Why is it just you four? If this is a school board project, why aren't everybody visiting schools? That's really what I'm concerned about. Why are you four alone visiting? I've known you for a while, Madam Chair, but you're not intensely dividing this board. I've seen and watched y'all in meetings, y'all are divided, ain't no question about that. Well, is it intentional? Just you four go visit the school, the other three, I mean, what is it, two boards? I have never seen this, Madam Chair, all the years I've been coming here, well over 20 aboard, as divided as you all seem to be. You trying to fire the superintendent? Have you and the Vice Chair met with city council members to discuss firing the superintendent of the schools? I don't know what's going on here, Madam Chair, but I know this, I'm truly afraid this is not going to end well for us, all you administration. I can see it coming. I don't know why, but I know this, if it comes to that, noel, it's not going to stop at the city limits, I promise you that.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, School Board and Leadership Team members, Mr. Mitchell, and fellow stakeholders. My name is Vicky Manuga-Greco. I'm a Lake Taylor graduate of the class of 85. Like thousands of parents in our city, my husband and I put our faith in and count on MPS to educate our three children, just like my own mom and dad relied on our Norfolk School System many, many yearbooks ago to teach me and my six siblings, all graduates of Lake Taylor. I'm forever grateful to my late parents for being my very first teachers. They taught me not just to see a problem, say something must be done. They taught me, along with my school teachers, to believe in myself enough to say, "I must do something." So as a public education advocate and engaged observer of board sessions, I'm here again tonight to share my grave concerns about the current governance efficacy and stability of our newly fully-elected school board and newly-comprised school board, which seems to me, and other concerned citizens, began divided on July 1 and continues to work or not work undivided on very important decisions such as board norms and operating practices that we require of an authentically collaborative governance board. At last month's meeting, because of my concerns about leadership readiness, I shared the critical traits and practices of effective school boards, because of poor, self-serving decisions I've witnessed that clearly lack transparency, integrity, and accountability by a majority of the new leaders on our school board. Some Norfolks might criticize my criticism of the four school board members who voted against the pursuit of leadership transparency, accountability, and good governance, which results in destabilizing you as a board. Let me be clear, what guides my service is not special interests or personal vendettas. What drives my advocacy work for our school system at the local and state levels is positive persistence, and about what is right, and persistence in the belief of the promise of public education for all of our children. As a citizen boss, I have that same high expectation for all of our elected school board and city council leaders. I want their collective success, my and my family's lives depend on it. And like Ida B. Wells, the African-American investigative journalist, educator, and early civil rights leader, I want our school board to join me and other citizens in believing that the way to right wrongs is to turn the truth of light on them. So I will keep shining that light, because like our children, our public schools demand the sunlight of good governance to help them grow. schools demand the sunlight of good governance to help them grow and become stronger. School board members, leaders, representatives, I thank you again for hearing me out and for serving our learners, teachers, schools, and community.
Madam Chair, that concludes our citizen comments.
Thank you very much. We are going to now proceed with the adoption of the consent agenda. Are there any board members who have any concerns with the items on the consent agenda at this time?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to have the, there's a couple of items. I'm sorry. The, I'd like to have the facilities report pulled from the agenda as I have some questions around that. And I noticed that the board clerk, the deputy clerk, is not posted.
Well, we'll move that out. We can move that out and do a.
Okay, the resolution to extend the clerk.
Yeah.
And the legislative, the legislative regulation adoption.
We can, we are going to move that onto the discussion agenda.
Moving 5.0, okay, because it's still listed here.
Well, the, the legislation, regulation, the adoption, are you speaking of the adoption of the delegate handbook or the adoption of the legislative?
I.
Okay. We were, we're going to change that.
Okay.
All right. From our discussion earlier.
The 5.06 was supposed to be the, the SBA, adoption of the VSB A delegate handbook.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah. I didn't know if that was a legislative priority.
Yeah, we can get it.
We won't be able to do that till next month.
Yeah, right. That's, that's why I wanted to be sure it's pulled, it's not listed there.
Is that it? Is there anybody else who has any concerns with the items on the consent agenda? So just, neither of us? Okay, so what we are doing is we will be voting on the personnel report, the student support services report, bills and payroll report. We will pull facilities and adoption of the delegate handbook. We all clear? Okay. All right, Mr. Butts, would you please call the roll? Oh, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to the discussion items for tonight, item 6.01, the monthly financial report.
Thank you. Ms. Ingram is, is coming to the podium. This is, again, our, our monthly financial report, and we're still, I guess, exiting now. We've just exited the first quarter of the fiscal year, though not the first quarter of the school year. And so I asked Ms. Ingram to brief the board on the financials.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, Dr. Boone, and school board members. I will be giving you the highlights of the first quarter of the third accounting period for this fiscal year that ended September the 30th. Revenue received as of September 30 was $70,230,944 or 21.3% of our total budget. This compares to 23.3% for the same time period last year and 22.4% for fiscal year 2017. On the expenditure side, as of September 30, we have expensed or encumbered a total of $57,319,011 or 17.4% of the total budget. And that compares to 15.5% for the same time period in 2018 and 17.8% in fiscal year 2017. And we did not have any budget transfers that was $50,000 or greater for that accounting period. And the next page is just the same information but shown differently to show your revenue categories and expenditure categories, and there weren't any significant changes from year-to-date comparison and variances. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, just one, I can never quite get the numbers right, but there's a, uh, item, I think it was with student field trips. Let me see if I can find it. Is there anything in particular about, I know we probably ask this every year, but I thought I saw on one of the pages some negative numbers associated with.
Essential pay? Are you looking at the details?
Yeah, I'm in the detail. Here it is. Okay, it's the wrong line. Okay, I thought it was student travel, but you said it's contract services?
There, you remember in September, we had essential pay personnel concerning with Hurricane Florence where we paid our staff to come in. So those lines, we didn't have any budget there, so you will see in the negative column until we do budget transfers to cover those deficits.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair. And for additional clarity, those represent the staff who are the custodians and the trades who are considered essential personnel and who had to work throughout the storm, as well as those from the custodial staff and the child nutrition staff who manned the shelters.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the monthly financial report? Can I have a motion to adopt the motion, the monthly financial report?
I move that we adopt the monthly financial report.
Second.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Quarterly grants update?
Also, also you have before you the quarterly grants report that shows the status as of the end of September, the 30th, 2018. I can briefly go over some of the changes, questions you may have. If a grant closed like at 6:30 or 9:30, they may have some balances at the end. We're going to tell you about our process. We are now in the process of closing out those grants, and oftentimes, we have not yet posted indirect costs to the grant, so some of those will have indirect costs associated to those. Others, if, if we really find that we may have been short on some expenditures, we do have the opportunity to transfer those expenditures from the next year's grant as long as it falls within that same accounting period. The only grant here possibly that we did not spend everything was Carl Perkins, and that was due to, we had funding set aside for part-time employees and they did not work the full year, so some of those funds were left from there. But the others were basically doing expenses moves or posting indirect costs to those grants to close them out. And we are in process now of doing that and making final reimbursements by mid-November.
You also know, at the request of the board, we, we included a percent of the award used as that request was made.
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
It's very helpful.
Are there any questions on the grants update? Do you have a motion to approve the quarterly grants update?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the quarterly grant update.
Actually, do we need to have a vote for this? I don't think we need to have a vote for this. Okay. Okay. Great, okay. But we will need to vote on the next item. Thank you very much, Ms. Ingram. Appreciate it. Item 6.03, Bill 1615, a resolution for adoption. Mr. Clanton, would you like to bring that to the board's attention?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At our last work session, the Stephanie Isles brought to us about a proposed bill, House Bill 1615 regarding elections, and during that session, it was upon the general consensus of the board that we would come to this meeting and would vote on action. So I'd like to present the following resolution for consideration. Madam Chair, whereas House Bill 1615 will focus on elections and the date of June primary election in the Commonwealth of Virginia, changes the date of primary election held in June from the second Tuesday in June to the third Tuesday in June. The bill also changes candidates' filing deadlines to reflect the change of date. Be it resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk supports the passage of House Bill 1615 elections, date of the June primary election, be it further resolved that, that we will produce a letter expressing the board's support.
There, a second?
Second.
Second? Is there any discussion?
Just one, we'll be able to update that, the board docs, just so we have a written copy of it.
And Mr. Clanton worked with Ms. Isles on getting that composed so that it's in sync with what she presented to the board.
Oh, yeah. I'm fine with the red.
Okay.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 6.04, the VSB A delegate. So each year in November, the school board attends the Virginia School Board Association Conference, and as part of that conference, there is a delegate assembly where we vote on many legislative items that the VSB A will champion on behalf of all of our school boards. And in that process, there is a process for selecting your delegate and your alternate that will be representing the board at that assembly. And Mr. Clanton, if you wanted to just kind of clarify what the rules are from the handbook that you received?
All right. Yes, Madam Chair. So on page one of Section A of the delegate assembly, though it has not necessarily been the custom of this particular board and taking a vote, it's typically been the chair and the vice chair. We've decided to follow with the protocol here and to have a formal vote in naming our delegate and our alternate at the delegate assembly, which will take place on Thursday, November the 14th in Williamsburg. The, the actions for which the delegate will take on behalf of the board is that they will elect officers of the Virginia School Board Association, and two at-large members of the board will adopt any amendments to the VSB A bylaws and as well as adopt legislative positions for the ensuing year.
Okay, and we've already had some discussion about the legislative proposals, so is there a motion on the floor for delegate and alternate for the VSB A delegate assembly?
So I know normally we would get a motion on the floor, but is it okay if I just ask a clarifying question?
Okay, that would be fine.
So we had the, I think the, when the delegate handbook came out, it indicated that if a board did not elect a delegate, that the chair would be the primary delegate and the vice chair would be the alternate. So if, if the, what we've done in the past, the reason why we didn't necessarily bother with taking a vote, because usually the chair either served as the delegate or the vice chair served as the delegate, or when we were doing appointments, we just had a friendly request and somebody served. If, I'm just trying to get clear, what are we, are we doing something different than, Dr. Gabriel, you being the delegate and Mr. Clanton being the alternate? And then if you chose not to serve or unavailable, then he would be the alternate? What are we actually trying to accomplish here? Yes, it's.
So Mr. Clanton has asked to serve as our delegate, and I will serve as the alternate, so we're just going to, if it's the will of the board, serve in that capacity at the delegate assembly.
So then that's, that would be the, that's the motion that you're putting on the floor?
That would be the motion. So is there a motion to allow, to nominate Mr. Clanton as the board delegate and I as the alternate for the VSB A delegate assembly?
I'll make a motion to nominate Carlos as, Mr. Clanton, as the delegate to the VSB A convention and Dr. Gabriel as the alternate delegate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move intersected. I will ask for any discussion.
Yeah, I have discussion. So I'm, I'm not, I guess the only reason that I'm discussing this, and just for the record, I currently serve on the VSB A Board of Directors. I'm only, I just want to get some, some clarity. So at the last work session, and I apologize for being late, had a family emergency, so as I came into the meeting today, what I heard was that, at least what I think I heard is that as part of the consent agenda, which I think we just pulled off, we would be voting on everything that's in the delegate assembly handbook, including the nominating committee report. Correct?
That's what we were going to be voting on.
So at the last work session, there were some questions raised around my candidacy as president-elect. I didn't bring those issues forward. Those issues were brought forward. Where do we stand with that? So is it, as part of supporting the nominating committee report, is it, that this board has now found that there's, was no issue with my candidacy in the process that I followed or, or what? Because I just, just like to get some clarity on that.
I think there are two separate items. I think there's the item that Mr. Clanton had a, a question about whether or not there were items that this board had to fulfill in order for you to be in the position of being recommended for the position that you are in as president-elect. And then I think that the separate issue is, does the board, with the handbook that has been provided to us and all of the legislative proposals that are there, does the, can the board adopt that book for moving forward to vote on at the delegate assembly?
Yes, so maybe, I just want to get some clarity around where I came in, in the, in the work session or the workshop, that as I understood it, the board was prepared to adopt all the resolutions, including the nominating committee report. I'm just asking because if there's going to be some concern, if the board has some concerns around me serving as president-elect, I'd just like the board to express those concerns. If there's, you know, if we're just going to be straightforward and deal with what normally occurs at the delegate assembly and, you know, following whatever protocols, that's fine. But if there's something else going on, I'd just like to have some transparency around that so I'm not blindsided at the delegate assembly.
Madam Chair, if I can. Because the references to the question that I brought, the question that I brought to you before the meeting about it because of my, my prior role in this, trying to figure out because it was some uncertainty, and I asked if you could provide information back to us if the proper protocol had been followed, because there, we had gotten a real alert other than the VSB A newsletter in regards to your nomination, and I just wanted to make sure that we had everything that was in place. And so you provided information, you provided even information from VSB A, which I was satisfied with. I felt as though that that's where it was. As you know, an individual would like to follow the protocol, that the delegate is voting on behalf of the board. And so what are the board's direction is, is that if I am elected as the delegate, that that's what I'm going to carry out on the floor, that there is no blindside, there isn't anything else but whatever the board decides on. So I'm trying to, actually, this process is to be very transparent in that it's, you know, if I'm elected as delegate, that I am truly representing the will of this board at the state conference. So that was my item, and yes, you did hear, I said to place the report there. If, you know, speaking to your issue, if there is any other trans, you know, issues that anyone may have or concerns, I would personally like that we just deal with the delegate, the alternate piece first, and to deal with the handbook, and particularly if there's anything around the, the nomination report, that we just handle that as a separate item outside of that so that we can actually have some conversation. Madam Chair, if that's okay?
And just, just so you know, I just wanted clarity because the, the issue had been brought up before, and like I said, I was unfortunately late earlier, so I just wanted to get some clarity because no one ever came back and said that till just now, that the question that was raised before has been determined that every, you know, that I followed whatever procedures were, you know, were followed. I apologize to the board. It's just my nature. I don't normally go around. I apologize to the board, it's just my nature, I don't normally go around and just say, hey, I'm doing this and doing that. And like I said before, I knew that you all were aware, at least, that I was being considered. So there was a letter that went out, and maybe the board just didn't receive it. There was an email that went out at some point that copied this board on my recommendation prior to the newsletter coming out, so I'm not sure if that got stuck somewhere, but in any event, I just want to make sure that there was no, no concern. If there was, then, you know, we would talk about it, but I'm, I'm fine. So, thank you.
So what I recommend moving forward is we have a motion on the floor to allow Mr. Clanton to serve as the delegate and myself as the alternate. Let's go ahead and take care of that motion.
Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Nay.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item that then, that we will discuss then is the, so, let me, let me just hold on a second, let me just make sure I have all my notes correct.
We have to do the facilities.
Okay. We're under Matters of the Board.
Yes.
Okay. So let's move on now to item six point oh five, under Matters of the Board. One of the items that we need to bring to closure is an item that we had in discussion earlier, and that was regards, regarding the clerk position. So I would like to go ahead and to have a motion on the floor to direct our superintendent to proceed with the position of a single clerk versus the combined position that is currently, was currently prepared for the board.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Single, it would be a single full-time board clerk. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct our superintendent to proceed by advertising, interviewing, and recommending a full-time, single clerk, single as in, one person, yeah, full-time clerk, as the clerk of our school board.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Butts, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Nay.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. That being said, I would like to have a recommendation, a motion on the floor to the items such as this, to adjust the service date of the role of the deputy clerk from November first to, November first, 2018, to a new end date of December thirty first, 2018. This would essentially be extending Mr. Butts in his role as deputy clerk until the position can be filled. Is there a motion on the floor to support this?
Madam Chair, I move the recommendation.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, has Mr. Butts indicated he's willing to serve in that capacity?
Mr. Butts?
I think it's an odd question answered at this point.
This is not the appropriate, yeah.
We can.
This is not the appropriate setting.
I apologize, I asked that earlier and hadn't gotten any feedback, so I thought maybe he had been spoken to.
He needs to think about it a little bit.
Well, we need to extend the role of the clerk.
I'm comfortable commenting if you like.
Okay.
For the purposes of continuing with the work at hand until we can find someone full-time, I will do what the district needs.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And we are very grateful for your service. So, can we go ahead and call the vote?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Okay. Then what we can go ahead and proceed on with is the adoption of the delegate handbook?
The legislative positions.
Of the delegate handbook?
Yep.
Okay. So now we need to move, have a motion on the floor to adopt the legislative positions that are outlined in the delegate handbook.
Didn't we do that as part of the consent?
No, we didn't do that as part of the consent. Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the Virginia School Board Association's delegate assembly handbook items in regards to the legislative positions for the ensuing year.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Going to abstain.
Dr. Gabriel?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Jordan, would you like to explain why you're abstaining?
Only because I'm currently serving on the board, and I know where we're going with it, and so I just don't want to create any conflict, that's all. I'm serving on the board of the VSBA, I support the work that we're doing as division, so I just thought it's appropriate to abstain, that's all.
Okay. Okay, noted.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
I, I think that in discussion with Mr. Cloud, he had, he had suggested that if we do abstain, that we have to give a reason why, and so that's the only reason why I was asking. Thank you. So then, the last item that we would need to adopt with regards to the, to the delegate handbook would be the nomination slate, am I correct, in that part? Okay. So the slate for nominations, would you mind, do you have a copy of that, Mr. Clanton? Yeah. Okay, so the nominating slate for the VSBA president-elect candidates would include Mr. Rodney Jordan. At-large candidates would be Teresa Ellison and Elizabeth Hardy. And also Janet Turner Giles. So those would be the candidates that we would be voting on for the president-elect items.
Think there's a full, there's, I'm president-elect, Tyrone Foster, president, then there are others, I'm not.
Okay, so it would then be the full slate that we would be supporting at the time of the assembly?
Yes, that would be the slate.
So, in actuality, because those are automatic, Mr. Jordan, the president, and then the president selects his chairs, we're actually only voting on the president-elect and the two at-large members. Because it's automatic.
Okay. So, Ms. Campson, I, I see you have a question about this, so we've had to.
I wasn't aware we were doing a vote now on this. Did I miss something?
No, well, see, we, we had some discussion early on about the legislative handbook.
Right.
The whole handbook, all together. But then there was some concern about the voting on the delegate, so who that would be, so that would be Mr. Clanton, which we just voted on, and myself as the alternate. They wanted to pull that out separately. And then the other item that was going to be pulled out separately was the nomination of the president and the president-elect. Okay? The slate, the nominating slate. So we've taken the handbook and we've divided into three parts, and we voted already on the actual proposals, we have voted on the delegate and the alternate, and now we are voting on the slate of the president-elect and the president.
May I ask for clarification? Are we, we're saying that as a board, we support the full slate, so we're directing the delegate to go and support the full slate at the convention, is that correct?
We can.
No, well, I mean, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. I think that that's what, that's what. If, if we, we currently don't have a motion on the floor right now, and so if we have a motion on the floor to say, you know, I move that we adopt the slate as presented in the VSBA delegate handbook, we have the motion, the second, and then some discussion.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to actually, I'd like to table this to our work session, and it's nothing to matter, it's just that we haven't really had an opportunity. Mr. Jordan will be representing us at the state level, which is a good thing for the district. He'll be president-elect, and then he'll automatically become president the following year, and then he'll serve as immediate past president. I think it would be great to hear about his platform items and to hear about how he's going to represent us. And that's just in the, the spirit of trying to be transparent and to be collegial. And so I just think if, because I originally said, hey, just put it in there, we talked about bringing it out, and Jordan mentioned transparency, so I'd just like to table it. Let's put, bring it up, we'll have plenty of time before we go in our session, and then we can have a conversation about it, and, you know, and hear about his, his ideas for what, what he's going to do.
Okay.
Do we have to have a motion table?
Yeah, we could. It's not on the agenda.
I'm unclear as to, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm unclear as to why we would do that. He's been nominated, I think his record, which is also included in the, in the packet, so as far as transparency goes, that's very clear and strong. You know, I don't know anyone who is a stronger public servant in this city, period, than Mr. Jordan, with his advocacy for the last several decades. And so I think if we're going to move forward, and we've had this packet for a while, I think if we're going to move forward and make a motion on it, we make a motion on it tonight.
My.
Is my personal two cents.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martin?
I have not had the opportunity to have a personal conversation with Mr. Jordan that I'd like to have before we have a vote, so that's why I'd like to table this, and I hope you respect that.
Ms. Campson?
I didn't see it on the agenda, I see the delegate vote on the agenda, I, I feel like I was a little caught off guard too, and I'm not familiar with any of the people on the slate, and I would feel irresponsible making a vote. I, I, I'm just, I guess you caught me by surprise, because when I looked at the agenda, I did not see that, and I did not understand that it was part of the handbook, which we would have already done if we had not pulled it out, I guess, and I would have voted without realizing it, so that's on me. But when I looked at the agenda, when it was, when it came out, I did not realize that that was included as part of that handbook. So I feel like I'm kind of taken by surprise here, and I know as Mr. Jordan has said many times, we should not take people by surprise when we're getting ready to vote. He's pointed that out when we've done that once before, and he was correct, because now I know exactly how he felt. Because I, and I know that wasn't intentional, and, but I just feel like I need to look at it all, I don't even, so it's a nominating slate and with no opponents. Anyway, I need to be more inform, I don't feel informed enough to do a vote.
Thank you, okay.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with the vote.
Then, is there anybody else who would like to, we have three that can table the, or asking to table the issue? I would say that we can go ahead and table the issue until the next agenda, and we'll bring this back up, or for the board to consider for a vote then. Okay. And we'll get those questions clarified and any other conversations that need to happen beforehand. Okay, well, also under Matters of the Board, we, at one point in time, we had had a slot for committee reports, and I'd like to go ahead and offer a moment, I know that I haven't directly reached out to anybody yet as far as the process for the committee reports, but I know that there have been some wonderful meetings that have taken place since our last meeting, and so what we can do is, as a goal for the next formal meeting, to iron out how we want to deliver the committee reports with any items that you want to have onto board docs for us to have the ability to view and for also the public. So if there are any committees that have met and would like to give a very brief report, I would like to open the floor to that. Are there any members? Ms. Bassin?
Well, as you, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee has continued, has started meeting for the school year. We had our first meeting last month, and it was a great meeting, talking about priorities, using the local gifted plan to talk about what priorities around identification, staffing, service delivery, and really with the goal that that might help along with the report that we received at the end of last year, the end of your feedback report from the GAC, to really guide the gifted review process, potentially, where priorities of the advisory committee, recommendations, and how that might inform the process along with the administration. And I think the administration, Dr. Chavis, who was there, and Dr. Cataldo, who attended, I think that's really important right now for the GAC to see some faces from the administration. So I appreciate your attendance there. So, that's it. We meet on the first Tuesday of the month, so if there are parents out there interested in applying to serve, please attend one of the meetings, there's an application, a brief application form, and we'd love to have your involvement.
Thank you, it was, it was a wonderful meeting. Ms. Martin?
Okay, I can talk about the, I'm on the Special Education Advisory Committee, and we met three months ago, and our last two months of meetings have been canceled because of weather. But at that meeting, it was very productive, it was a lot of discussion about meeting the needs of our special education students, which is, of course, one of our, our priorities here, is to close that, that achievement gap with them, and also to inform the public and get more parents involved. We encourage any, you know, I know it's, it's difficult when you have children, and especially if you have children with special needs, to make it out, but we meet on the third Thursday of each month, weather pending, here in this building on the eleventh floor, and so please get in touch with me if you're interested in serving on the Special Education Advisory Committee. We also partner with the Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities, and we held a parent education advisory training session, and there were over fifty people in attendance, and it was a very productive, very informative session going over the IEP process, and I, and we're going to partner with, partner to bring more of that training here and, and also expand the focus to five oh fours and, and so forth. But I was very impressed with the, with the event, and Prime Plus helped partner with us, and I appreciate them providing lunch in the facility. I am also on the Norfolk Public Library Board of Trustees as a liaison, and we had some discussion about the two boards getting together, and we're looking, this just, yes, just yesterday, we had conversations about possibly doing it next month, so I'm going to be sending something out to you all to try to coordinate that, because I believe that the mission of, you know, the library and also our school system are very similar, and that we have a lot of resources we could share, and there might be some community opportunities with, with grants that, that could help us out, and help all of us. What else? And the WHRO committee met, and we had the opportunity of hearing from our state superintendent and learning about his, the Virginia Department of Education and the governor's goals, and maybe Dr., or Dr. Boone can speak more about that, but it was a wonderful opportunity, and there was wonderful attendance, and I think that's it, I'll hand it off.
I, I think you pretty much captured it. He was actually there as an introduction to the WHRO Joint Board Meeting and the Committee of Superintendents that support the WHRO piece.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Martin, was that it?
Yeah, also the Policy Committee, Ms. Bassin and I are both on the Policy Committee, and we meet monthly, we'll be meeting tomorrow morning to go over our policies and continue to make sure that our school system is aligning with our recommendations from our state.
Thank you. And I guess, again, if there are any board. And I guess, again, if there are any board members that have any policy suggestions for you to review, we heard a couple that came up during our workshop and some other items that we can, we can bring up. Thank you. Ms. Campson.
Last, oh, excuse me, last Friday, Dr. Birdsong and I met with the United for Children Board, and it was, and we heard a little bit of it already tonight from the city manager, because what United for Children is doing is that they're concentrating the support they give Norfolk Public Schools within the St. Paul's corridor, trying to get children as high in their achievement level as they make their transition into new schools to make, for better transition. So it was really exciting to hear and talk about the work that they're doing, and I know I had a call today from one of the people on the board saying that they've just gotten a new grant and some good ideas for how that's going to be used to really focus on the schools that are going to go first, Tidewater Park and Young, and then Jaycocks. So that was, that was very exciting, and a very, really good board to be on. And we had just met for the first time because weather, weather conditions. And then Mr. Coleman and I met with the Access to College Board, and I'm first generation, as you know, the access works with students who are working to be the first generation of their families to have a college degree. And since I'm a first-generation college graduate from my family, I was very excited about joining that board, and it was very interesting to see the type of support they give to the students who are in their program all the way through high school, and then the scholarships they give them, so they can indeed become a first-generation college graduate. So, all that's very nice, I'm really excited with the boards that I'm on, thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Clanton?
Dr. Gabriel, just quickly, I had the opportunity to attend, though I think I came in the meeting a little too early, Dr. Boone, with the, my first Governor's School and CSEP Board Meeting. And at that time, I also want to make acknowledgement with the CSEP Board that Dr. Boone was elected again as the executive representative amongst the superintendents, and so we want to congratulate her on that opportunity to represent us there. But the Governor's School is special to me, because I'm a Class of '98 graduate of the Vocal Music Department, and I think we may have another Vocal Music Department person sitting here, which I'd like to also recognize our student representative who just finished a, was streetcar with Virginia Opera Company and representing Norfolk Public Schools as well, so we appreciate that. So I look forward to bringing back great opportunities that we can support our students, the unique things that they're doing, and that concludes my report.
I have a report also. We had a facilities committee meeting, Mr. Clanton was out of town, so I wanted to get an opportunity to meet with him and share with him some of the discussion that we had. But part of what we talked about was coming back and maybe having a discussion with the board about how we can work with the facilities committee to try to address some of the policy-level activities that the board can take in support of facilities and not necessarily, and try to avoid the school board members being in the meeting of what can easily be a staff meeting. So there's some recommendations, like to sit down with Mr. Clanton and go over those, and then see if we can come back to the board together with some recommendations on moving forward with the facilities committee, both in terms of frequency, as well as how we can tie it to our policy and governance structure.
Yes, Jalen, we were definitely going to come.
Okay, I'll be brief. First, I want to say it is an honor to sit in this seat. For many of you, you might not know my story specifically, and I won't go into it, just know I applied for this position a lot. I applied for it my sophomore year, and then they were like, well, you have to be a rising senior. And I said, oh, okay. So I came back, and I'm here now. For those of you who don't know why I was not here, it was just mentioned, I was in Virginia Opera's production of Kurt Vile's Street Scene. We just finished on Sunday, yes. So I'm home, finally. I want to say thank you to Schaefer for sitting in last month, it was really helpful. I want to say thank you to Dr. Boone for even allowing me to be on this amazing board. I tell you, in the past few weeks, I've visited many schools, elementary, middle, and high schools, and to see the good work that we're doing in Norfolk Public Schools really makes my heart happy. I also wanted to thank Mr. Butts and Annalisa for everything that they do for me and Schaefer, because everybody knows we need help. And then I just want to encourage our students, a lot of students I know from Booker T. are watching the meeting tonight, since it is my first meeting. But for any other students, I don't know what camera to look at. For any other students that may be watching. That one, okay, very good. Any other students that may be watching, fifth graders and rising ninth graders, I encourage you to go to our high school specialty nights next week. High school is on Tuesday at Norview High School at 6:00, and middle schools is Thursday, October 25th, at Norview High School also at 6:00. These are specialty programs that are designed for you to flourish in these, in these programs. Like I said, I was in a specialty program in middle school and high school, middle school, I was at Ruffner Academy for the Young Scholars Program. And then high school, I'm in the Academy of the Arts at Booker T. Washington High School, as well as the Governor's School for the Arts in the wonderful Vocal Music Department. So, yes, I'm just, I'm excited to be here, and yeah.
You know, Mr. Smith talked about, oh. I was going to say, he spoke about a legacy, and I'll tell you that one of the things that I am most proud of for this board, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Bassine, I'm sure you and Dr. Boone can all agree on this, is having our student representatives, because every one of our conversations should be focused around the student, and you all bring laughter and joy and perspective to our decisions, and you lighten the conversations, but give us the ability to refocus on where the importance has to lie. So, we are just so appreciative that you are giving of your time, almost 9:30 at night, to be here with us. So, that's, that's, I think, one of the best things that our board could have, could have done, so, Ms. Bassine.
Before, before we get too far too, I want to remind, we have to get back to the facility use.
Oh, the report.
Yeah, the report.
Did you pull it out?
Yeah, thank you, okay. Yes.
All right. We were just having so much fun here, okay.
We're heading toward a journey.
All right, you had a question about it, the facility use report.
I do, and I don't know if Dr. Ingram, I don't know. So, I was looking through.
Facility uses.
504.
The number, so this is the facility use report, and it states that the city, the Norfolk City School Board is listed as having filled out a facility use form for Booker T. Washington. And I'm just curious to know what that, it's cafeteria, it's number 42795A. I don't know if Dr. Ingram or Dr. Boone, if you know, because we didn't have a meeting, meeting there. In the cafeteria of Booker T. Washington.
I believe that particular one was a community forum meeting that Mr. Carlos was having, Mr. Clanton, I'm sorry, was having at Booker T. Washington. That was the forum that was completed.
Okay.
That was a forum that you actually showed up to? You showed up to it in the parking lot?
Yes, right, right.
But it didn't happen?
Right, but that, I guess, but that wasn't a school board forum.
No, and it shouldn't be coded as a school board, I think my title is that I'm on the school board.
I think the way it was completed, it had on there hooded "off a school board," so that's how it was picked up.
Okay.
I can go back and pull it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, like I said previously, you know, we are encouraged to engage with our community and all of that, but I think, you know, as we are a new board, you know, short of two weeks ago, just short of two weeks ago, you know, we talked about how we would operate and being sensitive to acting on behalf of the board. And I think community conversations like that, it's really important to make sure the community is aware as well that it is not, you know, it's a community conversation, but not a school board sanctioned event. Because that can be confusing.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, each of us are members of this board, and we also have a charge to meet with and to talk with our constituents. And so, just like any of our schools are used for any event, I'm still a school board member that represents Ward III, and if I'm at a school or make that request to meet with my constituents and to put in a form, I should be able to do that. Now, there was a lot of confusion around that, and so I made the decision to pull that. But I think that based on this conversation tonight, that we need to have a deeper conversation, and I'd like to hold up individuals here, but to really talk about that process and that protocol as we move forward. But I think that it should be encouraged that we meet with the individuals in our community to educate them about the issues, to address their concerns, and to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of our community. So I would respectfully request that we have another deeper discussion to talk about these items, and I appreciate you bringing that up, but that we need to have another conversation, so we can talk about the protocol.
Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the facility, school facilities report?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the facilities report.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Butts, roll call.
Ms., excuse me, Ms. Bassine.
Aye.
Ms. Campson.
Yes.
Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
This is with the correction?
There's, what is the correction that is being suggested?
I thought you were saying that the correction was that the item that Ms. Bassine raised wasn't a school board function, it was a different type of function. I'm just, I'm just asking, is it with correction or not? My motion was to adopt the report as it was presented. Okay, all right, nay.
Excuse me, Dr. Gabriel.
Aye. Okay, are there any other items on our agenda that I have overlooked?
I just have a question for the next, for the, could you review the agenda or projected agenda for that work session?
Sure, the majority, we are going to be starting early. We are going to be, that time, I think, was sent out by Mr. Butts. And we are going to have a large portion of the discussion dedicated to the Accountability Plan, our goals and priorities. There will be a short segment on policy, I believe there are two policies at least that we need to go back and address. And I believe that's where we are right now. I might be, there might be one other item, yeah, but that's where the majority of the focus and attention is going to be. And again, that's going to be an elongated session, so that we focus our time on the Accountability Plan.
Okay, nice, and I'm glad you mentioned the policy piece, because we will have policies. And the CTE update.
We'll discuss that.
Okay.
We, it will not be on the discussion, but I have taken that into consideration.
Okay.
So, that being said, any other items for the good of the board? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.